In the Lane County Board of Commissioners meeting for our afternoon session for November 1st, I'd like to start by saying that Commissioner Farr, I believe is in transit, caught up in an accident, I guess, so we expect him momentarily to join us. So with that, we'll start off with this afternoon's business under Public Works. The first item is second reading and public hearing for ordinance number 16-08 in the matter of amending Lane Code, Chapter 6, to institute tobacco-free county parks policy. We have with us Mike Russell, our Parks and Animal Services Division Manager. Good afternoon, and Karen Gap.
Yeah, brought Karen with me again. So for the benefit of the public, I'd like to just go through the kind of the history of how we got here, reason for the policy, and possible next steps. So the board is being asked to revise Lane Code, Chapter 6, to create a new park rule that prohibits smoking and tobacco use in all Lane County parks and related facilities. The board, acting as a Board of Health, has been given reports on and had discussion related to this item, as well as the Board of Commissioners, acting as the Board of Commissioners. On March 1st, Health and Human Services, in conjunction with County Administrator, provided input regarding tobacco-free county parks as it relates to prioritized priorities identified in the Community Health Improvement Plan via Board Order 130625. So the Community Health Improvement Plan had a priority identified within it for tobacco reduction within the community. The chip strategy, a specific chip strategy was to increase tobacco-free places, including parks. As a result of our discussions with the Board of Health, the board asked that we refer the subject to the Parks Advisory Committee to review the state and other, hello Commissioner, policies regarding tobacco and to provide recommendations back to the board, and then to schedule a subsequent work session to review potential policy changes. So we presented these issues related to the adoption of tobacco-free parks policies to the Parks Advisory Committee on May 9th. They subsequently held a hearing on June 13th and received public comments. Just to kind of summarize the public comments, we had four email comments and four in-person testimony provided at the Parks Advisory Committee hearing. Four, the four people that showed up and provided testimony were in favor, and then we had two email comments, I'm sorry, four email comments that were supportive and two that opposed it, and we provided you with those at your first work session. I believe you're also copied on the email comments as well, so the board has seen those.
The email was probably two plus two. First you said there were four emails, and then you said four, four, and two against.
Yeah, I apologize. I recognize I screwed that up. So let me restate. There were six comments in total, four in favor, two opposed at the PAC hearing, and then we had four people come to the hearing, provide testimony, who were all in favor. The PAC accepted the public comment and voted six to one to recommend the adoption of a total tobacco-free parks ordinance to the board. At the August 16th meeting, the Board of Health asked that the proposed rule that prohibits tobacco, oh, sorry. Yeah, the proposed rule that prohibits tobacco use in county parks and facilities be brought to the Board of Commissioners for further discussion. That was done on September 27th, and the board asked that staff prepare a draft ordinance for first and second readings. Your first reading was held on September 20th, or, sorry, October 18th, and that scheduled today's meeting, which is the public hearing, second reading and public hearing. Regarding the health implications, the negative health impacts of tobacco and nicotine use remain the leading cause of preventable death and represent significant costs, both financial and personal, to all county employers, residents, and staff. Nicotine is highly addictive, and the negative impacts of smoking, second and third-hand, are well-established. Adopting policies that reduce an environment in which smoking is prohibited and therefore accepted represents a proven evidence-based strategy that contributes to a decrease in the use of tobacco nicotine products, and county parks are used by all residents for all ages and are maintained by county staff. The use of tobacco products is most commonly initiated among youth who are frequent park users and visitors. Further, the discarding of cigarette butts produces an ecological hazard in county parks. Discarded butts represent a danger to both wildlife and the parks' environment. Currently, Lane Code defines smoking and tobacco products as follows. Smoking, this is in Lane Code, Chapter 9.7. Smoking means inhaling, exhaling, burning, or carrying any lighted or heated cigar, cigarette, pipe, weed, plant, or other tobacco-like product or substance in any manner or in any form. Smoking also includes the use of electronic smoking devices, which creates an aerosol in any manner or in any form. Tobacco product means any product that is made from or derived from tobacco, which contains nicotine or a similar substance, and is intended for human consumption, or is likely to be consumed, whether smoked, heated, chewed, absorbed, dissolved, inhaled, or ingested by any other means, including but not limited to a cigarette, cigar, pipe, tobacco, chewing tobacco, snuff, snooze, or an electronic smoking device. Tobacco product does not include drugs, devices, or combination products approved for sale by the U.S. Food and Drug Administration as those terms are defined in the Federal Food, Drug, and Cosmetic Act. The proposed ordinance does classify the violation of the rule that would be established by the ordinance as a Class D violation, as prescribed by Oregon Revised Statutes 153.019, placing it on the same level of violation as our parking tickets, basically, with a presumptive fine of $110. Parks and Animal Services does not anticipate using citations as an enforcement tool, other than in extreme cases where there may be other behavior issues that we're trying to address. If you'll remember, at your last, at the first reading, we discussed, and also at previous discussions regarding this item, the board discussed on several occasions the burden this might place on already thin parks staff. The reasoning that seemed to carry the day was that the policy will, one, make a solid statement of health to the community, two, address an issue of cleanliness within the park system by reducing cigarette butt litter, and, number three, by allowing smoking in parks, fire prevention, by not allowing smoking in parks, fire prevention efforts are further supported that protect park assets during dry seasonal months that are typically when our parks are most visited. Staff is, as far as next steps, if the board moves forward and adopts the ordinance, staff will implement the new ordinance. We're proposing an 18-month transition period to implement the new rule. What this will involve is updating our park rules online and other information that we provide online for campground reservations, for instance, making sure that people are aware of the new policy. That may help them make decisions on whether or not to reserve, implement distinctive signage. We've got an example from state parks for their signage, and giving us time to make the signs and get them posted throughout the park system. We also want to train our campground contract staff on how to provide information regarding the rule, and also, over the next 18 months, educate our park users. This would include next season, which is the 2017 recreation season. The proposed ordinance, as presented, is fairly simple. It adds a new section to Lane Code. The proposed section is 6.597. Smoke-free county parks, subsection 1, smoking or the use of any tobacco products as defined by Lane Code 9.7, is prohibited in all county parks, including all park facilities. Subsection 2, violation of this subsection constitutes a Class D violation. And that's the extent of the ordinance and the new code language. I have Karen here to help us with any technical questions regarding the community health plan and that whole process and your action as the Board of Health, and I'm here, obviously, for the parks' perspective.
I'm going to interpret that eyebrow raise as an opportunity for me to say good afternoon and really appreciate the staff at Public Works. This has been a great joint effort as we work through taking a strategy that's in the Community Health Improvement Plan and then looking at across our organization how we might work together to implement that. So I appreciate Mike and the other folks at Public Works and the Parks Advisory Committee. Certainly, as a Board of Health and as a Board of Commissioners, you've talked about this a lot, so I don't have a presentation or new information. I guess the only pieces I would add to what Mike covered as we move forward is thinking about the trend in parks. So I know we've talked before about all of the jurisdictions that have gone before us in implementing this policy or similar policies. At the last work session, I know we talked about the National Recreation and Park Association adopted a policy statement in support of this work. So I think that there are a lot of other jurisdictions we can learn from as we move through the implementation process, and I feel good about that. And certainly, the health rationale that we've talked about, in addition to the parks' maintenance side that Mike talked about, really, the issue of reducing smoking in our community has been a priority for the board and the community, and this is a policy that moves us in that direction, creates pro-social norms, and really provides tobacco-free spaces for people who are trying to quit. And what we know from the data is that 85% of smokers have tried to quit. Most adults wish they never would have started, and this is an opportunity to help keep young people from starting in the future. So I'm happy to answer questions as we move forward.
Okay. So wanted to add that we did receive one email comment today, and I forwarded that on to you, so that is part of our comment today as well.
Okay, thank you. So Mr. Russell, before I call on Commissioner Farr, I wanted to recognize that we have several members from the Parks Advisory Committee here.
Yes, thank you.
Would you mind taking a second just to introduce?
Sure. Yeah, we have Kevin Shanley, Mary Borby, Wayne Lembler, Pat.
A former member, Pat Hoover.
I think that's it.
I think that's it, yeah.
Well, I want to say thank you for attending. I'm not sure if one of the members wants to make a statement as far as the committee perspective, but that's open to that if they want to. So we'll start off with questions before we open the public hearing. I got Commissioner Farr.
Thank you. I have a few questions, and first I'd like to say thank you to Ms. Hoover for your years of service on the Parks Advisory Committee, and we're going to miss you, obviously. But during those years, I think you'll acknowledge that a lot of things happened with that committee from the time you took over, from the time that you got on that committee until now, and for a couple of years in the future. It's a hot and heavy committee, a large charge, a lot of things that you're doing, a lot of recommendations that are going to last for many, many years, generations to come, as a matter of fact. So thank you for that. And Ms. Lembler, I believe you're still the chair at this point. Thank you for your service also. I have a couple of questions. One, we had one dissenting vote on the advisory committee, and everybody else voted in favor, but I've had a chance to talk to the one dissenting vote a couple of times, but could you characterize why the dissent? What were the reasons for one person to dissent?
Chair Stewart, Commissioner Farr, the one dissent was in support of the state policy, and the idea being that we don't want to completely, you know, I don't want to speak for that member, so I want to be careful, but he did want it not to be so restrictive.
Okay. And that's more or less what he said to me in the conversation that we had, that state policy does allow for smoking in campsites.
Correct.
And this policy would not allow for smoking anyplace on park limits. And I'm going to say before I ask a couple of questions that I am in favor of this, in favor of the Department of the Advisory Committee's recommendation. But I do have a couple of kind of pointed questions regarding staff. What input did you receive from staff during this process? From park staff, people who would be ultimately enforcing the rules, the rank-and-file, so to speak, of people who are actually on the ground working in the parks?
When this first started coming up in August this year, we specifically brought it up for staff meetings, and we've talked about it several times, in fact. And that's where this idea of mirroring the state policy came. Our staff felt like that was reasonable. There is general support for the policy, but as far as a complete ban, there were concerns about placing rangers in awkward situations where they're having to knock on RV doors to tell people to stop smoking, that kind of thing. They didn't want to be placed in that kind of position. And so that's where this, this idea of mirroring the state policy, which excludes campgrounds and camping units, which is the RVs, from the policy.
Excellent. That's, and I actually said that to me before. I just wanted to say it out loud here, that you did contact with them, to contact them, talk to them, and gather input. And then contract staff, you had mentioned contract staff. Some of our parks do, we do have people who are actually in the parks, who ultimately may be the ones saying, hey, you can't be smoking here. How, have you been in touch with them, or?
Yes, we've spoken to them as well. They know that this is on the, on the board's agenda, and had mixed comments. Some actually do smoke, so this would impact them. And we've made it clear that if it did pass, that they would need to leave the park property. And right now, for our caretakers, they use the residence that's at the park, and that's currently, they can't smoke in the residence. So they're already used to some restriction on the habit, but this would remove, or require them to remove themselves from the park totally.
So the caretakers at Orchard Point, for instance. Okay. Then, Mr. Chair, Ms. Smoker, I see. I'd like to point out that I've been in contact with Ms. Gaffney and Mr. Russell as we went through this process, as well as several of the Parks Advisory Committee members. You've done a superb job of answering my questions, and I had some pretty hard questions as we went through this, you know. How do we differentiate ourselves from state parks, and a lot of things that you've done a very good job of managing. Got me to the position where I am right now. That's not to say I'm not going to hear a testimony that's going to change my mind. But as of right now, well done. Well done to the Parks Committee, well done to staff, and well done to the Health Department to bring this forward. It is directly in line with our chip, and if we're going to have a chip, then we darnwell better stand by the chip. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Other questions or comments? Commissioner Lichen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mike, could you go back, make sure I heard this correctly, in that is regarding citations? So it sounded like to me you said we will not issue citations. Is that under the 18-month period?
Right.
Or is that period?
Yeah, that's what I'm proposing, that this first 18-month period, we would not focus on issuing citations unless there was other issues that came to bear that we needed to address. But we would focus on education, friendly persuasion, and signage to help enforce the policy.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question before we open the public hearing. So at Agenda setting, we had a discussion about this policy and talked about the state's policy, and it was read to us during that meeting, and there's a provision here. I'd like, I want to know whether or not you researched it further, whether it was something that needed to legally be added to the state policy. But under item J, section D, it says, "We're allowed by the park manager for personal use by a member of a federally recognized Oregon tribe as part of their traditional religious, medicinal, or other customary cultural heritage practices." So I was curious if you might have researched that a little bit more, if legal counsel has a interpretation that legally that needs to be included.
I haven't done specific research on that provision. I know that was specific to the state parks' policy, giving recognition and exception for tribal use. I guess I would refer to County Council. Probably don't have much more information than that, other than it wouldn't be just to add another section to the proposed ordinance to include that language.
Yeah, no real difference for me. I think that's right. If you want to create that exception, the same as state law, you need to add that language in to the code, to be clear that that's there. The other alternative is for the Parks Department to make an internal policy, simply not to enforce in those circumstances, but that's a little more ambiguous, given the nature of what's said and not said, so.
Okay. Well, I was kind of hoping that maybe we might have been able to find out why that was included, because I'm just thinking out loud. I'm not aware of this, and any of the city adopted no smoking in their parks. But, you know, we do lease facilities out to different organizations, and so if a Native American tribe wanted to lease one of our facilities and have an event, then I'm wondering if that's why that was included. So I was hoping that we'd know that, but.
Yeah, I haven't looked at it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, seen none. We'll move to, I'll open the public hearing. And I have a list of folks that have signed up. It's not, it may not be all-inclusive. We'll have at the end, but when I state your name, please come forward to the podium, restate your name and area of residence, and then I have a timer that once you have done that, I'll start the timer for three minutes of input. The first person that has signed up is Fred Kelso. Fred, can you speak up, can you come up to here, please? Thank you.
I was expecting more vets to be here. Back in '69, '70, I was a second-class citizen. I came here out of China, and I smoked cigarettes. And there was a lot of discord. I feel like a second-class citizen. Well, I've smoked cigarettes for a long time. I don't smoke them now, but it's just the idea that, that not so restrictive, that's fine. I mean, you guys in your parks, they don't need to be smoking out there, I suppose, little kids. But when it comes into their campsite, that's as far as I'm concerned, that's their domicile, and there shouldn't be any restrictions there. It's too many campfires. I find it more intrusive than the stinky wood that's burning in a fireplace. That gags me more. I've got problems. But it's not right. And I don't want to seem like a second-class citizen again. That's really all I got to say.
Thank you. Next is Mariah. Is it long?
Learn.
Learn, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mariah Learn, and I'm in Commissioner Stewart's ward. Both of my parents were heavy smokers. They were overseas veterans of World War II, and I remember thick layers of smoke in the kitchen from camels and lucky strikes. My dad died relatively young from lung cancer caused by smoking, and I'm a non-smoker. Having said that, I'm against the county park smoking ban and hope you reconsider it. There's no evidence, to my knowledge, that people smoking in open areas in any way endangers our health. Rather, I think it is a clever way to target the homeless. I support smoking bans inside and 10 feet from businesses and classrooms, but nothing more than that. Banning it outdoors in county parks would be governmental overreach, an unnecessary and unjustified restriction of public freedom and public space. Moreover, it appears intended to discriminate against citizens who frequent these locations. Our constitutional rights must be protected from steadily increasing erosion, "encroachments," which always target first the marginalized and the least powerful members of the population. If you are truly concerned about public smoke inhalation, you might consider banning fireworks. On the Fourth of July, they create a dense layer of smoke over the city, frighten animals, and sometimes trigger post-traumatic stress disorder, post-traumatic stress disorder episodes for both veterans and victims of conflict. They occasionally cause injuries and fires. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is David Pichoni.
Hello. I was just wondering, which of you was the one that voted in favor of or against this measure? Which of you? Okay, thank you. You will be my ally. I will start by admitting that tobacco is a dangerous medicine. It causes cancer, emphysema, and chronic obstructive pulmonary disease. This having said, there are tribes and there are shamans that, of all the medicinal herbs that are out there, only use one, and that is tobacco. I was watching a Bollywood movie, Hollywood but from India, and they made a very striking presentation of the dangers of smoking within a household. But this does not apply to parks, where everybody's air is, comes and goes, and it's, there's a lot of free air. So I, I think that this, this, this ban is, like Mariah said, it's targeted towards the homeless and towards people that can't go and smoke inside their own homes, people that otherwise have no homes. So I will demonstrate to you that smoking causes no harm to those around you.
Excuse me, excuse me. You cannot smoke in here, sir. Sir.
I am doing this for the health of all. And I'll put this out now, and it's a sacrament for me and for many others.
Next is Ellen Otani.
Good afternoon, Chair Stewart, Vice Chair Bozovich, and the Commissioners. I'm Ellen Otani from North Eugene, Commissioner Forrest District, and I understand that you are very concerned about the need to curtail the effects of both first and second-hand smoke. I would like to shed some light on statistics that were referenced at an earlier meeting but weren't actually spelled out. While it may be true that a higher percentage of veterans and the poor smoke than the percentage of smokers in the general population, the differences nevertheless are small. 15% of the total population smokes, 20% of those in the workforce, 24% of active-duty military, 20% of those in the VA system, and 26% of those below the poverty level. The situation becomes clearer when the percentages are stated in reverse. Not to agree with a complete smoking ban would actually discriminate against and possibly harm the health of roughly 75 to 80% of each of the subgroups that I've mentioned, and 85% of the population overall. More importantly, 39% of RV owners actually have children in their households under the age of 18. Youth groups hold many day camps, might hold them in a county park, or may actually tent camp if their program involves spending the night. The voters' pamphlet has a dozen arguments in favor of Measure 99 to create an outdoor school education fund versus two arguments against it. What better place for young people to have an opportunity to learn outdoor skills and etiquette than in a rural county park? The Register Guard editorial on the smoking ban suggested that we might, on looking back, question why this state step was not taken earlier, and I personally hope that we don't have to also question why the decision to help the county maintain people's health wasn't unanimous. And I have brought copies and a list of four of the many Google sites where I found these statistics.
Thank you. Next, we have Susan, is it Fanner?
My name is Susan Fanner. I live at 1788 Riverview Street, and Commissioner Sorensen is my commissioner. I am in favor of the policy. Chair Stewart, Commissioners, thank you. I express my gratitude for taking action on creating tobacco, smoke, and vape-free policy for our county's parks. As a resident of Lane County, I am proud of our county parks. Because of this new policy, I imagine more residents and visitors will be able to bring their picnics, boating, and camping to places like Mount Pisgah, Orchard Point, Perkins Peninsula, and Richardson Park. My family and I have sailed on Fern Ridge Reservoir for over 25 years. When launching or docking a boat at Richardson, Orchard Point, or Perkins Peninsula, it will be refreshing to breathe clean air rather than get us with a smoke. Visitors and residents alike appreciate being able to camp at Richardson. This new policy will allow them an affordable accommodation and extend time at the lake for sailors or boaters. The majority of county residents and visitors are non-smokers. I believe we're at 17% for the state at this time. This step to protect the environment permits all Lane residents, our neighbors, and visitors the assurance their family and friends enjoy smoke, tobacco, and vape-free camping, boating, picnicking, playing, and working. Way to be. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Susan Widenbeck, is that right?
Widenbeck.
Widenbeck, please, sorry.
Thank you for the opportunity to comment today. I didn't come earlier because I did not think it would go this far. I'm a user of the parks. I'm an outdoor person. I've used the parks, and overnight, I've bought my seasonal pass for years because I'm a boater. I use all of the facilities of the park, and I'm very proud and grateful. I live on River Road in Eugene. I came here to express vehement disagreement with this action. Like some of the ones before, when you lease a campsite in a state park, it is like a lease. It is your living space. As far as I know, smoking is still legal in the culture. It is still, it is still an issue of personal freedom. It is not just discrimination against Native Americans and homeless people. So essentially, somebody's going to rent a campsite, but they don't, they don't enjoy the privileges of paying for that campsite. I understand the guidelines you have about health. I'm for reduction of smoking in public places, of course, closed places. We seem to forget that this is the open air and there are breezes blowing. This is an air quality issue and a civil rights issue. And, you know, long-term health, I'm not sure, is the purview of the state parks at this point. It's not as easy as saying, oh, don't watch that movie, it offends you, or, you know, don't partake in that activity. You're essentially excluding smokers from paying their fees and going and having a nice camping experience. The results are in scientifically about the results of wood smoke. It isn't just the asthmatics. When I camp out in the boonies, we don't make campfires because my friends are, it makes them sick, wood smoke. If my neighbor at the campground has a big white man's fire with wood smoke, much less the fuel you put on to light those briquettes. That stuff's toxic, man. And then, I'm in the campsite next door. I don't say, "They need to outlaw that person over there with their briquettes and their, then their noxious fumes," because that's their living space, and that is what they do when they come to enjoy the parks. So it would, to me, that's a very big issue. If you're going to start legislating air quality, you know, there's other places to go than the few smokers that have been ostracized forever, you know, for a long time in this culture. The no enforcement, I worked for the federal agencies in the woods my whole life. This business about making rules that you can't enforce is serious business. It undermines the legitimacy of essential laws and regulations that you can enforce. I know a woman, you know, that has to enforce travel laws for plovers on the beaches out of, you know, on the beaches of Oregon. And I know recreation techs that have gone into federal campgrounds and have to enforce rules. You have to train them in law enforcement, you have to train them in confrontation. You know, people, when you tell people what they can't do, they get really angry. So I think we're underestimating the impacts to the employees that have to enforce these rules, and also, you're underestimating that it undermines your important rules when you put in rules that can't be enforced. You don't have people to enforce this. That's a problem.
Susan, your three minutes has been up. If you could summarize, that would be great.
I'll definitely summarize. And, oh, I did have a summation here, I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous. The littering issue could be a public information issue. Cigarette smokers have become very responsible. You know, public education about their butts and littering would probably be more appropriate. So, oh, let me tell the story, because this is the punchline. I worked in a state facility for the BLM in Springfield, and, you know, they put the law in place, no smoking on state facilities. We had a great little outdoor space. It was vets returning of all sorts, military personnel, and our federal workers. So the smokers, they had a great little outdoor spot by where the vehicles were. And so the law goes into place that they can't, they can't use their little shed, they have to not be on state property. All of the vets and the federal workers are sitting on the curbstone under the BLM sign right there on Pierce Parkway. All the neighbors complained, they looked like a bunch of lowlifers smoking cigarettes in the butt, in the curbstone. And then, all the local businesses said, "This really looks bad." So that, that's the anecdotal evidence I have in a state facility under this ban. But for sure, in a campsite, I really think that it's going way too far. The nanny state has gone way too far in protecting us from each other and ourselves.
Thank you, Susan. And next is Mary, is it Brosby? Brosby?
B-R-R-B.
B-R-B. B-R-B.
I'm Mary Brouerby, and I'm with the Parks Advisory Commission, so Commissioner Stewart's appointee. So thank you, Commissioners, for hearing this again, and I would like to bring your attention that a fourth member of the Parks Advisory Committee has come in. So I think that makes a statement as to how much we are getting involved in the policies and developments of things within the park, and this is one issue that we all discussed thoroughly. I do think that we had some oversight in the tribal issue, so that might need to be, need to be revisited through the state's statement. But I would like to follow on the momentum of the national parks, which they are banning smoking in the parks, period. And I think, Commissioner Stewart, you spoke of some of the values of going smoke-free in the parks that you worked in down in your area, and the maintenance, and how it helped with cleanup. And so Karen kind of took some of the wind out of my sails, because I just kind of mentioned some of the things she did, but not to reiterate that, but, and I'm not speaking for the PAC, I just signed up as an individual member, but I do think that we are just trying to make a statement of health, as we said before, for myself, and it's harder for the Rangers, of which we have four for 70 parks, to enforce this. So we were relying on public influence, as I think one of our members, Mr. Shanley, said last time. So we just want to make a statement of health, the parks, Lane County parks, we think are for health, and I don't want to judge anybody on it, but the parks are there for generations to come, and I think this is a good time to think of a transition, period. So that's it. Thank you.
That was the last person that has signed up this afternoon. Is there anyone that would like to give testimony that didn't sign up? Okay. So with that, I'll close the public hearing. Look to my colleagues for questions, comments. Not everybody jump at once here. Commissioner Far.
Well, I have a question. Marinas were mentioned, Mr. Russell, we have three marinas, is that correct, that we operate? And currently, smoking is allowed in the marinas? And now there's gasoline and other things there? Is it just prudent measures that are available as far as marinas are concerned right now? Okay. And this would include, of course, marinas?
Correct.
And the parks that we do allow camping in on a regular basis?
Correct.
Which is pretty limited. Could you tell me how many parks we have, and then tell me how many we have regular camping in?
So we have 70 parks. We have four that have a campground.
Okay.
240 sites.
Okay, so that puts it into perspective, it's, there are 66 parks that don't have regular campgrounds, then. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Sorensen?
There was testimony about, about what the camper has a right to, and they, I believe the person said that they were leasing the campsite, and I understand that campers are not leasing the campsite. Could you go into that a little bit, from what you know, about whether they're in fact leasing the campsite?
So I believe County Counsel did look into, you know, when they reserve a site, is there like a rental agreement or a tenant landlord relationship that's established? And in his, I believe it was you, Andy, that did that, right? And I believe what we heard was that there was no prohibition from us saying, "No, you can't smoke," even if you do, if you are a tenant of ours. Like I said before, even the caretaker houses now have a stipulation, no smoking in the houses.
I don't, I wasn't the one who looked at that.
Oh.
Surprisingly. But to answer the question, no, it's never been considered a lease agreement. It's really a permit to use the space, similar to the sort of permits we have out at the fairgrounds, for example. So there aren't really any attendant rights, residential rights, landlord-tenant rights, for example, that go along with that.
Does the Landlord-Tenant Act apply to people that go to a campsite and put down their own money? Is that a tenancy under the Landlord-Tenant Act?
No, it's not.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Commissioner Far.
Prepared for a motion, if we're ready for that?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm going to make a motion to, on option one. Do we have a date certain for the, for the second reading of public hearing?
This is it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the wrong, okay. Then, then, Mr. Chair, I move the passage of ordinance number 16-08-01. Is that the day?
Second.
It's just 16-08 for ordinance number?
Yeah.
16-08, no dashes after that, thank you.
Okay. Further discussion? Commissioner Bozovich?
Thank you. So there's been a lot of discussion around this issue, and I want to back up first to the chip. The chip, at the time we approved it, we approved a strategy around tobacco to reduce tobacco usage in Lane County, and particularly youth tobacco usage. Ultimately, in the strategies that got spelt out under that, they identified banning smoking in various places. It was never a strategy I agreed with. This particular strategy has tenuous scientific data behind it that it's effective. The staff report that was given to us, looking into the footnoted references and all that, mostly talked about indoor smoking bans and their ability to reduce smoking, not outdoor. So we're talking about doing something that doesn't necessarily reduce the smoking rate in Lane County or the smoking rate in our adult population or in our youth population. So the secondary argument's been, well, it's about modeling behaviors. We don't want our kids seeing people smoking in parks, having a good time, because they're modeling a behavior that might be dangerous. That gets us into a very dangerous set of law. When you start talking about banning behaviors because you don't think, you know, you want a model for youth, we could get into all sorts of bad law that is still present throughout the world. Just have to look at some of Sharia law to look for laws that are around banning behaviors because they might influence people and how they're using it to control women's behaviors in those countries. I really believe that we're going in a bad direction with this ban. You know, if we're concerned about litter, we've dealt with litter in this country by providing, you know, receptacles, educating people. I can tell you, I do roadside pickup along 126, right across Fern Ridge, as far as my Lions Club. The major portion of litter I find is stuff that was bought just down the street at the local convenience store or fast food place, and it's mostly soft drink cups and coffee cups and candy wrappers. So we can start, maybe, we're going to start talking about health effects and all that. Maybe we should talk about obesity and the impact that has on our society and all those things that I pick up on the roadside that are actually contributing to obesity, and then maybe we should think about a ban, you know, of those folks in our parks, because that's modeling bad, bad behavior. It just, we're going in a really bad direction. You know, it's easily shown that there are underrepresented, less powerful communities that have higher smoking rates in our society. So on a social justice side, we're talking about excluding those folks from our parks. And I just think, you know, no matter what way we look at it, it doesn't make sense. And, and I just think, you know, no matter what way we look at it, it doesn't make sense. You know, Karen knows I am not a tobacco advocate, and I'm especially trying to keep it out of the hands of youth. You know, I, I carry a tobacco21.org pen with me, and I'm advocating for raising the age of purchase of tobacco up to 21. You know, and that doesn't make some people happy with me. But this is the wrong direction to go in our, and I, and I plan to vote no on this policy because we are just, we're looking at, at a ban that's more about modeling behavior, doesn't have good scientific evidence, and it's discriminatory against some segments of our society, veterans and the poor, that I just can't support.
Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to vote no. And my reasoning is, is really comes down to, and I, and I've expressed it before, I've never smoked. In fact, if the United States of America today banned all tobacco products, I could care less. Wouldn't bother me in the least. I haven't smoked. My wife's never smoked. My children don't smoke. There's no smokers in my family. There's no chewers in my family. I mean, that's just as simple as that. There's, there's, it, it just, so this is an issue for me. I think what it comes down to, and I, and I've, I've expressed this, I think there's, there's two areas, the campgrounds and enforcement. I, I just don't, this is going to be a feel-good policy, is what this is going to end up being. There's really no way we can enforce this. And, you know, so I, that, that's my view. And I, and I, I think I know where this is going. And that, and that's okay. I mean, I, I've been on the, on the, on the short side before here on the board, and I'm okay with that. But, but I, from my perspective, I do have an issue with the campgrounds. And, and, you know, my family's been involved in ownership of RV parks. What a great marketing potential here, just to, so if we're going to ban from the campgrounds, I guess RV parks will welcome in. And, and unfortunately, I think that's, that's where we are. But I, so I, it, it really comes down, it's the campground issue, and, and I just do not see how this is going to be enforced. I really don't. And unless we have an entirely new revenue stream, unless the federal government says, you know what, we're going to really write a big new SRS coming back to Lane County, you betcha. They get along so well back in DC. I can see that happening. And I do not see tax reform coming from this, from Salem anytime soon either. So we are stuck where we, what we have as far as revenue is concerned, and that, that's really where I'm at on this. And again, I'll reiterate, if, if, if the federal government today got rid of tobacco products and banned smoking, I'm, I'm fine. I could care less. So that's, that's where I'm at on this, and, and I'll just have to vote no. Thank you.
Commissioner Sorensen.
Thank you very much. I know that a lot of issues are involved in this, but one way to pare down all these issues is just talk about where the current majority of Lane County residents are on smoking. And we are actually very low as a percentage of international or national smoking. And so we know a lot of the people that go to our parks are Lane County residents. We're really talking about almost a, almost like an 85-15 split in the population, meaning that right now, it's 15% of the population that gets to smoke in the parks, and it's 85% that gets bothered by the smoke in the parks. And to me, we're turning that around by enacting this ordinance. Now, people say, well, wait a minute, this is all about smoking. Really, it's not about smoking because there's plenty of other places to smoke than Lane County parks. And if you're looking for an outdoor experience, and if you're trying to get away from the culture that's outside of those parks, this is an opportunity for you to go out and enjoy these parks. Now, you know, this argument that, that we are somehow living in a nanny state and that the government is telling people what to do, they're not telling you what to do. They're simply saying, you can smoke wherever you want, but it's not at Lane County parks. It's not in a place that's designed to be available to everyone. Now, it may be that somebody could light a cigarette in this room, and, and me, as an asthmatic, I'm not going to die of an asthma attack. I do have, have with me my medicine if I need it, which I don't need right now. But just to understand, small amounts of particulate do affect people. They affect children, they affect the elderly, they affect people with compromised respiratory systems. So the reality is, it does. And as for the comment that, that modeling doesn't work, modeling somehow is a bad idea. The government shouldn't pass an ordinance for modeling. Think about some of the things we do in our culture because of modeling. There's no law that says you have to stand up when the flag is being presented. There's no law that says that. People just do that because it's a courteous thing to do. Most people do that. Now, some people may not do it. But modeling, most people do because they believe in what they see as the symbol. So I don't agree that modeling won't have an effect here. I think if, if people see, particularly children, see adults enjoying themselves in the outdoors and those adults aren't smoking, then that becomes a powerful image for them. And, and the converse is true. As was mentioned over in Springfield, you had a group of adults smoking out on the street corner, and the neighbors were upset about that because they thought that was bad behavior. So I think that, to me, it makes the point. Now, if someone wants to come in and make an amendment to this ordinance down the road about religious freedom in the same way that the state has done, I'd be very open to that. I'll be very open to that because I do think there are examples of cultural practices that should be respected by government. But that's not what's in the ordinance today, and I don't want to hold up this ordinance because of an, but I would like the Parks Advisory Committee to take a look at this down the road. Because of the prevalence of Native Americans in Oregon, because of the recognized tribes, and because there is a connection between the use of tobacco in religious, you know, ceremonies and symbology. So I am open to that. But I would like to see what's being done at the national and state level before we change this ordinance the way it's drafted today. And, and last but not least, I'll say, you know, there's been some reference to who isn't smoking and who is smoking. We do know that there is an income component to this, that the more affluent someone is, the less likely they are to smoke. The more educated someone is, the less likely they are to smoke. The least educated tend to smoke more than the better educated. The more affluent tend to smoke less, and the less affluent tend to smoke least. And there's obviously differences within racial groups. To me, that's all somewhat irrelevant to the big issue, and that is that, you know, 85% of people in Lane County are not smoking, and they really don't want to be around it. And for the 15% that do, they have plenty of other areas to smoke in without bothering the, the people that visit to Lane County parks. So I, I'm glad the board's taking this action today if it does, and thank you very much.
Commissioner Farr.
Thank you. Just going to give my own personal view on this. I had two concerns initially. One was regarding campsites, and, and the other was regarding enforcement. Regarding enforcement, we have speeding laws, for instance, and those aren't fully enforced. So should we remove speeding laws because we can't really fully enforce them? That's not the reason the law is on the books. The law is on the books because that is, it, it describes what is, it prescribes what is acceptable and what is not acceptable behavior. Regarding smoking in campsites, that's a little bit more difficult for me because the state parks do allow it, and there is a certain amount of freedom that people expect when they're around a camp, campfire out in the open. But what I, what I came back to on that is our Community Health Improvement Plan. And the third key objective of the Community Health Improvement Plan was to prevent and reduce tobacco use. Now, how do we do that? Well, there are a number of ways. You can price it out of people's range, or you can restrict it out of people's, out of people's ability to use it. This is one of the steps toward restricting where people can use, can use cigarettes. The preventing, why did we have number three on our chip as the prevention and reduce tobacco use? Well, the answer is there. Tobacco kills more Americans than any other single preventable item. And so any way that we can, any means that we can use to discourage people from smoking, whether it's through modeling, whether it's through not allowing them to start, or persuading them to not start, or whether it's through not allowing it where, in, in places that we can control it, the, any way that we can prevent smoking is going to reduce people dying. Now, as far as the scientific evidence of, of, the, the effectiveness of ordinances like this, the scientific evidence just lies with, with the statement, with the fact that cigarettes do kill more people than any, that tobacco kills more people than any other thing in, in the United States. That's evidence enough. And, and my, my goal is to continue to enforce our chip, our old chip, the 2013, 2016 chip that calls for a reduction of tobacco and tobacco use. And I'm, I'm in favor for, for that reason. So as far as campgrounds is concerned, we have very few in Lane County. We have 66 parks where we don't have campgrounds. It's a uniform application of a no-smoking rule, and I am in favor of it. I've thought about it extensively. I've had a lot of extensive questions asked, answered for me, and I am prepared to vote yes on the ordinance.
Others?
I guess I'll throw out a few thoughts that I'm still struggling with at this moment. And we've been down the road, and I appreciate Commissioner Sorensen saying that, you know, I think we should consider the religious component about this and, and have a further potential discussion about it, but let's adopt it now. I was in that position before when we adopted some language. I believe my intent on not adopting the language at the time was that e-cigarettes were available to, to our youth, and there was no rules against it. And went ahead and moved forward with adopting that because I felt it was important that we addressed the fact that our youth were getting those products. In this instance, I'm not 100% supporting personally that we just adopt it and then we come back and adjust it later. I think it's good policy to make the best that we can, and I'm not 100% sure that this is at the best that it can be. I do think we should have a conversation, and it was brought up that maybe the, the Parks Advisory Committee could, could take a look at that component again and make sure that it's, whether it's needed or not needed, I'm not sure. I was hoping that there'd be some information from the state as to why they, why they included that language because it, it could be very important to our decision. I am also respectful of the comments that the citizens made about second-class citizens and the feeling about that. I have watched, I have several, a couple smokers in my family. My mother and my sister smoke. I think both of them probably regret, regret it for starting. But I've also watched how through society's change of norms have essentially, you know, they were once smoking in their homes, smoking in their cars. Today, because of their own family and their own courtesy for their family, they choose to go out to a, a space outside to, to use the product. So I, I am trying to be mindful of the, of the, the second-class citizen component there. But I also am brought back to the fact that we want to offer, we know that, you know, irrespective second-hand smoke has been proven to be a cause of cancer and death. It's proven, whether it's in the open air here or in confined quarters, it is proven that it happens. And, you know, we are trying to make an effort to improve people's health because in the end, it, it's very expensive. The healthcare costs that we're dealing with today and people's health. You know, if we want to go ahead and start attacking these people, I'll be the first one to be right there, probably being attacked. I, I wish sometimes we would think about our comments and try to be more constructive about our comments as to how we try to make our points. But however that is, I guess each of us get to choose our words. We got to hear a, a conversation this morning that Commissioner Farr chose to share about how our words impact people. And I'm the first one to, to know how words impact people through some of the things I've been challenged with this year. So anyway, I would prefer to ask for an additional reading of this ordinance and ask for a report or more information in regards to why the religious component was added to the state parks and to their adopted rules and see if it makes sense that it needs to be added before it's adopted. Whether this puts this out another two or three weeks, I, I think it's important to get that information before I make a decision. So today, I'm not going to be supportive of the motion, but I would ask that we consider a, a third reading, bringing in additional information with a language similar to what the state parks has brought in, in their component, so.
Weston's to make for the motion.
Commissioner Farr.
Procedurally, if we vote on this right now, it's going to go down. Just counted the votes. But that does not prevent a request for a third reading, the fact that it fails, is that correct? I am not going to withdraw the motion.
Commissioner Sorensen.
Mr. Chair, I, I would like to make sure everyone gets a chance to give their views on the motion that's been made. And then if everyone has had an opportunity, then I'd like to call a question and make sure we get a, a vote on this before we take another move.
Okay. So is there any further comments on the motion? I believe all have spoken, so. Commissioner Bozovich.
Just, I'm a little point of order here. If we vote down this ordinance right now as the motion's been made, how do we have a third reading on an ordinance we just voted down?
Oh.
You know, I, I don't see how that works. We either have a motion to amend or to, to ask the table for a third reading, you know, or, or if we defeat this, it's done, and you have to start over again for the first reading.
I, I think it's, I don't see a problem with having a vote, and if it does not pass, having three members of the committer, commission give staff instruction to come back with revised ordinance to do another reading and...
Be a new ordinance for a first reading now?
No, I think you can, I think you can move to amend it.
We have to read it twice if you're going to change language.
Well, yeah, we'll have to do another reading, for sure.
So basically, following...
Following...
Be a first and a second reading with, with another hearing.
Yeah. Whichever number you give it, yeah, you'll need to do another reading, and it, since it will be new language potentially next time it comes to the board.
Have another public hearing.
13 more days.
Yeah. And another public, it'd basically be a new ordinance. So it's not going to be a third reading. It will be a first reading of a new ordinance if we vote this, if, if we go to a vote on this and vote it down.
I, I'm not convinced that's the case, but at the same time, from a timing perspective, it's, you're not going to take any longer to do a hearing or not do a hearing, whether it's a third and a fourth reading or a first reading and another second reading with a hearing at the same amount of time.
We're voting down the motion, not the ordinance.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, assuming everyone's spoken, then I'll call the question.
Okay. Question's been called.
Mr. Chairman? Against debate.
Wayne, I believe I have to deal with the question first and then the direction before.
I have a point of order. No.
Legal counsel, can you give me some direction, please?
Can't. We've had a question. Point of order has to come from a member of the...
I think you can hear what the gentleman has to say or not, as the chair chooses, but I think you do need to hold the vote on this ordinance today based on the fact the question's called and the...
Commissioner Sorensen, I don't want to, you've called a question, so I expect you want me to...
Yeah, we should have the vote.
So the, so we, do we vote on the question first?
Yep.
Okay. So the question's been called. All in favor of the question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes four. I guess one all, all opposed. So now we need to vote on the motion to pass ordinance 16 dash eight. I believe that's a roll call. Mr. Mokaiewski?
Would you like me to call the roll?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Sorensen.
Aye.
Commissioner Farr.
Aye.
Commissioner Lichen.
No.
Commissioner Bozovich.
No.
Commissioner Stewart.
No. Okay.
Feels.
Thank you, three. Now, Mr. Lemner, if you'd like to come to the podium and make a statement.
Late now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This will be for future and historical information. As I tried to interject, procedurally, I wasn't allowed to, someone could have made a privileged motion to table the motion. That procedurally is acceptable. And at that moment, the motion would have been put off by a privileged motion, and you could have decided, let's get the information, why did this happen, from the state before. That vote could have been stopped.
Yeah.
But with all due respect, sir, I didn't interrupt because you asked me not to.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Appreciate that information. So at this point, is there further direction? Commissioner Sorenson.
Mr. Chair, I think that part of this proceeding should be to give the direction that you were talking about, namely to ask the Parks Advisory Committee and Parks Division to give us further input on this and perhaps give the public an opportunity to have a public hearing on any proposals that they bring back. And maybe we could do that all at once. That might necessitate three more readings, one to hold a public hearing, continued public hearing, one to have another reading if we get another amendment to the ordinance, and then a public hearing on that. But that way, we take the views of the public and the views of the Parks Division and Parks Advisory Committee. And true, it'll slow this down, but it'll also make it a little more thorough.
Okay. I'd like to, maybe I'll look to legal counsel and make some statements here. The ordinance is really pretty, pretty simple. I mean, it's two items in there. I guess what I'd like to ask is, is that I want to see some additional information. And whether, what that information does for me is, is does it need to, do we need to adjust the ordinance language or not adjust the ordinance language? I would like us to have a third reading on ordinance 16-08 and ask that we bring back the additional information. And I would look to staff as to how long would it take for that additional information.
Commissioner Stewart, can I just ask a clarifying question? So the additional information you would like is specifically around the tribal exemption that the state has, or is there other?
That's correct, yeah.
Parks Advisory Committee meets on the floor.
Let me, yeah, this item JD.
Right.
Is specific to federally recognized Oregon tribe as part of the traditional religious medicinal, medicinal and customary cultural heritage practices.
I won't give a thumbs up on that. I need to include campgrounds as part of this discussion period, otherwise I'm not interested. So, and you probably do have the three head nods on this, Chair Stewart. I just want to make it my point that I'm not interested in moving forward on this, if this is specifically all we're going to talk about.
Okay.
I still believe that you're starting with a new ordinance. We just voted down ordinance 1608. So whatever, it's going to be a first reading of 1609 or whatever, it can have the exact same wording and add in the religious stuff, but we just finished voting down 1608.
That isn't what I heard our legal counsel say, but I guess if I misinterpreted what I heard you say, it was.
I don't think, I would love to see the, any other ordinance that's been voted down by the board and then brought back for a reading after it was voted down. The history on that.
Doesn't, yeah, it's not that that arises very often, which is primarily why I'm not sure. I mean, I guess the safest way to approach it would be to give staff direction to come back with another ordinance that's exactly the same as this, but contains the exemption or the tribal use, and you can have a first reading and hearing on that, and, or you can just have a first reading and decide at that time that you don't want to push it out for a second reading or a hearing and a second reading.
All right. What's the pleasure of the board then?
And I'm sorry, Commissioner Stewart, if I can ask one other clarifying question, just so we're sure to bring you back what you want if three of you decide to direct this. What I heard you asking for was a little different than what I had heard Commissioner Sorenson asking for in terms of whether this goes back through the Parks Advisory Committee or you just want us to call the state. So ultimately, when you all give us direction, it would be great to just kind of revisit what all those pieces are that you want.
Okay. I think, Commissioner Lykan.
Sorry, Mr. Chair. If, and we'll wait for Mr. Clark on this, they get the opinion, if it is a new ordinance, if this is going to be a new ordinance that we're asking for, I think it does need to go through the PAC. But my opinion, and you know what?
Everybody has one.
Everybody has one, and that's just my thought. So if we're going to start new, this is a new ordinance, I think it's proper, it goes through, we've selected our folks to represent us on, as far as our park advisory committee, and we don't always agree with the outcomes of the PAC, but I think procedurally, if, and I'll leave that to Mr. Clark, but if he states this is a new ordinance, I think it should go back to the PAC before coming back to the board. Just my thought. And if you need to take for the rest of the day or for the rest of the week to determine that and send us the information via email, whatever the case may be, I'm fine with that too. I'm not looking for an answer today, just my thought.
Commissioner Farr.
Thank you. You know, we only loosely adhere to Robert's Rules in this body, really quite loosely. And sometimes we say, well, I think this is Robert's Rules, and sometimes we just don't know. Mr. Lemler has a clarification that he could have offered, but really, many bodies who really want to adhere to Robert's Rules have a parliamentarian who gives you an interpretation of Robert's Rules. The city of Eugene does, as a matter of fact, and they do adhere to Robert's Rules. That's not, that's not what we're talking about here right now. Today, we're on our set of rules that we operate by, and what Commissioner Lykan is referring to is more a procedural rule rather than a rule of order. And I agree with him that the PAC should have another opportunity to discuss this if we are going to change the ordinance. Also, I'm fine with calling it 1609 if it's a new ordinance, but I think moving forward with this is important. It's a little bit clumsy, the discussion that we're having right now, but the matter is, the fact is, I think we all, each one of us have expressed an opposition to smoking, and we'd like to move forward with something that's going to help us in our parks to adhere to our chip or adhere to what it is that we feel personally. So I, my feeling, and if you want to motion on this, is that we move forward with drafting ordinance 1609 with the same language as 1608.
Whatever, yeah.
But with a, but with an addition that incorporates a couple of the rules from the state park rules, one being J, which is the, which is tribal, for tribal sacrament, sacrileg, not sacrilegious, religious purposes, excuse me. And the other one is the one that is important to Commissioner Lykan, which is surrounding campsites. So to put those two provisions in the new ordinance, and let's have the Parks Advisory Committee take a look at it, bring it back to us. We want to move forward with something. We really do. I get that sense from this entire board, and just give us something that is a little bit more acceptable to the full body or as close to it as possible.
Yeah. Commissioner Sorenson.
I've definitely seen it go both ways, where the board takes a vote and that's the end of the ordinance, and then we start over, and we have a first reading, and we have a second reading, we have another public hearing. I've also seen it done the way Mr. Clark described, where we are amending this current reading with another reading and another reading. I think since there is a heightened sense of, well, what's the fairest way to go, I think it might be fair to say I'm okay with having a new ordinance, and the new ordinance is everything that's in the current ordinance plus whatever it is you and the PAC recommend. And then we'll have a public hearing on that. So to me, that's a clean way to go, and it addresses the concerns raised about whether or not we're really amending this or whether they're starting anew. The nice thing about our flexible system is we go by majority rule. So yes, there are plenty of procedural rules out there, like Robert's Rules of Order or Mason's Rules of Legislative Procedure or whatever, but our charter says that our majority rule supersedes all that. So it's true that Robert's Rules of Order apply, but only when it's, it could be superseded by a majority vote. So to me, since we all kind of agree that we should have a new look at this, let's just have a new ordinance.
Okay. Sorry. Thanks. At this point, we've had a recommendation to create another ordinance. Included in it would be the religious exemption and also the campsite exclusion for campsites, and send that back to the, to the Parks Advisory Committee for their thoughts and comments, and then bring it to the board for its first reading and another public hearing. Is there any other direction or comments? I know that there's at least three of us that support that direction. Okay. So do we need a motion to, in that effect?
I'm satisfied. I have direction.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll move to our second item of business, which would be the Public Works Item B, which is a third reading and deliberation of ordinance PA 1342. It's in the matter of amending the Rural Comprehensive Plan to Redesignate Land from Agriculture to Marginal Land and Rezone Land from Exclusive Farm Use E40 to Marginal Land ML in Adopting Savings and Severability Clauses, File Number 509PA15-05161. The applicant is Benedict Atol. And we have with us Rafael Seba, the senior planner to this item. We also have our land management manager, Nadia McKee. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair, Commissioners. On September 13th, 2016, the Board conducted a public hearing for an application to amend the Rural Comprehensive Plan to Redesignate 110 and 1/2 acres from agricultural to marginal land and to rezone land from the exclusive farm use zone E40 to marginal lands ML. At the September 13th, 2016, public hearing, the Board elected to hold the record open for a total of three weeks to allow the parties to submit additional information and argument into the record. On September 12th, 20th, and 27th, Land Watch Lain County submitted written testimony. On September 20th, 27th, and October 3rd, the applicant submitted responses to Land Watch's written testimony. The applicant's submittals included supplemental findings, which have been included with the findings of fact and conclusions of law contained in Exhibit C to ordinance number PA 1342. In the supplemental findings, the applicant has systematically and thoroughly addressed each issue raised by Land Watch, as well as the issues raised by commissioners during the public hearing. Staff is of the opinion that the applicant has adequately addressed the applicable approval criteria and concerns raised to date, and that there is sufficient evidence in the record to support approval of the proposed plan amendment and zone change. In summary, the planning director recommends the Board approve the application and enact ordinance number PA 1342 based on the applicant's findings, including the supplemental findings submitted on September 20th, 27th, and on October 13th, 2016. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Seba. Questions for staff? Commissioner Lykan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I believe you did confirm from the last board meeting on this, but this is quasi-judicial, is this correct, as a land use procedure?
Correct.
So we just, it's based on the criteria.
Correct.
Thank you.
Other comments? Commissioner Bozovic?
Thank you. And I sent these questions to Rafael yesterday so we could have a chance to prepare for them, so these aren't out of the blue.
Thank you.
So I want to clarify a couple things, because, you know, I have a lot of concern about this application, because it is, when you're taking ag land to marginal land, it basically affords the opportunity to subdivide and take it permanently out of agriculture. And this particular application's not about poor soils, which is where we usually see marginal land. So we're taking actually productive soils and potentially going to be making it into residential lots. So it's a permanent removal from our agricultural resource base of good soil. And so I, one of the reasons why I asked so many questions about this one, one of the statements made in support of the application is that marginal lands is still considered a resource. And my question was, is that actually statutory? Does it have, you know, is there something that supports that? Because from everything I've seen, marginal lands don't necessarily preserve farm or forest land because it ends up subdivision. So is that a statutory definition that marginal land is considered resource land and that's still preserving the farmland?
Yeah, marginal lands, the, the authority to designate marginal lands is within the statewide planning goals, Goal Three and Goal Four, which are the agricultural goal and the forest lands goal. So it doesn't live anywhere else. It is within the agricultural goal and the forest goal that provides the authority to designate lands, marginal lands. And it does so without the need to take an exception to Goal Three or Goal Four, which is what would be required for, you know, a developed and committed exception, say. So it's, because the marginal lands provisions and authority exist within Goal Three and Goal Four, it is viewed as a subset of resource land. There's, in this 1997 Board Direction for Marginal Lands, this is a document that's in the file, the Board revisited this, or visited this issue and provided this direction to staff how to implement it. And that direction talks about the concept of prime resource land versus marginal resource land. You have the good resource land and the marginal resource land. And for that marginal resource land, you can designate it marginal lands, and it affords the, a less restrictive path to development.
Yeah, and that's, that's kind of where, I haven't seen anyone go through the process of marginal land designation unless they were looking to get that less restrictive path towards development. And in this case, it'd be allowed to 10-acre lots, which at that point, you're not talking about functional farmland at 10 acres. So at least I want to make sure that's clear, that, you know, we can't say that this is necessarily taking it out of ag land and violating Goal Three and Four, because it's specific, marginal lands were specifically designed as a, as a quote, not quite an exception to Goal Three and Four. So, yeah, as the public and Land Watch or anyone that might object, we, criteria-wise, we can't say that this is, this is, you know, we're still protecting agricultural land under Goal Three because we're just changing it from EFU to marginal land, and that's still protecting it according to statute and state law. Is that an accurate statement?
I'm not sure I follow, but the authority to designate marginal lands is in Goal Three and Goal Four. So it is a subset of those resource lands. You don't need to take an exception to designate marginal lands, and the authority to designate marginal lands are within the goal, so within those two goals. So I think it, it is a creature of resource lands. It is, it is a resource land zone by virtue of the fact that, that the resource goals provide the authority.
Yeah, and I guess, I guess what I'm sort of getting at is it'd be difficult for us to defend a denial based on it was violating Goal Three.
Correct.
Let me put it, let me throw it in the reverse there, even though I believe effectively we are losing farmland by making this designation. So that, that's, you know, that's what I'm getting at, is the result of giving a marginal land designation is that we're And that, that good soil that underlies this property will no longer be available for farming. You know, might be some horse pasture out there, might make a really nice house, but it's not going to be a productive, larger, piece of a larger piece of ag land. So the other questions I asked were kind of around the whole parcelization test because this does have good soil underlying it. The only way you can get into marginal land is first, you have to show that it's surrounded by smaller parcels and it's part of an area that's been parceledized. And you have to pass the income test. It has to be both. And there's two ways of doing the parcelization test. There's one where you use a quarter-mile radius. And of course, in this case, that extends out into a lake. Or you set a boundary for 240, minimum 240 acres. Looking at the actual memo from the state on that particular thing, they talk about you're supposed to use that gerrymandering version of that if you're in a narrow valley or there's a major roadway you're following along. I don't think that exactly applies to this situation. The ground out there is dead flat. The only real issue you're dealing with is the lake on one side. But to draw a boundary that goes only to the northeast and barely includes the parcel in it, kind of doesn't pass the reasonability test for me, you know, as a reasonable boundary. There's no reason to draw it that direction. It's not part of a narrow valley. It's not following a roadway. What it's doing is avoiding the larger parcels to the south, east, and west because the lake kind of dies around there and tries to put it, make it part of what was an area that kind of got parceledized in a very old rural subdivision a long time ago. And then I had some questions about whether or not they actually used the 1983 parcels as the law has there. But can you kind of address a little bit about that issue of gerrymandering and reasonability and your thoughts on our ability to defend a denial based on their boundary being unreasonable and not really looking at, the intent of that, that use of that gerrymandering was supposed to be for geographical constraints, and there aren't really geographical constraints here?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. I'll first say, just on the tax maps and what tax maps they used, I'd like to go to that issue. That's a little bit more straightforward. So the study used 1958 base maps. The applicant had indicated to me in conversation that's the best that they could do. Those were included in Exhibits Q1, Q2, and Q3 of the application. And then they updated those maps to get to the 1984 configuration. I would note that Exhibit K, which included the whole map of the study area, used a newer map for the purposes of depicting the study area due to the poor quality of those earlier maps.
Okay.
But the study itself was based, their starting point was 1958 maps.
And updated to 1983, not 84, right?
Updated to the, yeah, I would, to the ownership that they were.
Yeah, okay. You said 84, but I just want to make sure we had the right year.
So with regard to the gerrymandering issue, the touchstone, I guess, for the analysis is the statute. And it's, what it says is, "The proposed marginal land is located within an area of not less than 240 acres, of which at least 60% is composed of lots of parcels that are 20 acres or less in size," as of July 1st, 1983. That's all it says. So I think this provision hasn't been used enough for it to have gone to the Land Use Board of Appeals, for there to be any, any case law, really, that provides any clarity. So when you look at that section of the statute, it's, there aren't conditions. It's not a conditional 240 acres. You have one that very specifically says you go a quarter-mile radius around the subject property. You have the other one that says it's in a 240-acre study area. And when, when I look at that code provision, there's nothing in it that limits the way in which you can draw it.
Yeah. You know, to take that to the extreme, I could take a parcel that's just to the south of this one that fronts Royal Avenue and draw a 240-acre study area that takes the Pike Stemmer Royal, goes into Eugene, draws most of it in Eugene area that's been subdivided way back in the, in the 40s or something like that in Bethel, and get a over 60% parcelization. But nobody would think that was a reasonable study area to do that. You know, that's, that's the, you know, the, and then when you read the letters about the specific Senate bill that allowed marginal lands and the explanation from DLCD and how it was supposed to be utilized and why that 240-acre study area was put in there and their thoughts on gerrymandering and why you would do it, it doesn't relate to this site. And I have a real difficulty looking at what they drew for a study area and saying that was a reasonable way to draw it, not going anywhere to the south and west of this parcel, when obviously the quarter-mile provision was intended to put the parcel in the centroid of your study area. And so it, and when you get down to it, it was about, the original intent was to have the county declare areas that were marginal lands, not have somebody come in and apply to be a marginal land. You know, so it was about the county drawing those boundaries and saying, oh, this area is marginal land in our county. So I still believe that we could probably defend a denial based on the study area not being a reasonable study area. So I, you know, just to share with the board, that's probably where I'm going to land, is I don't believe that they've demonstrated to me that there's enough parcelization to give up those higher-class producing soils on a larger parcel to have it designated marginal land and effectively be lost to our agricultural resource in this county.
Additional questions? Comments? So at this time, I'd entertain a motion for ordinance PA 1342. Mr. Farr.
Move alternative one, approve the application and act ordinance PA 1342 based on the applicant's findings, including the supplemental findings submitted on September 20th, 27th, and October 3rd, 2016.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Further discussion? No further discussion? Mr. Mokhaisky, read the role, please.
Commissioner Sorenson?
No.
Commissioner Farr?
Yes.
Commissioner Liken?
Aye.
Commissioner Bozovich?
No.
Commissioner Stewart?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Very much.
So at this time, we'll go to item 13, which is review of assignments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two items.
Happens.
That we had under agenda team requests. The first, both from Commissioner Stewart, the first was to contact Eric Peterson with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to set up a time in January for a presentation on six project, reservoir projects in your district. And then the second was to have the Legislative Committee meet and discuss drafting a letter to support the Eugene Civic Alliance request from the state for video lottery funds for that project. So we'll put both of those on the list.
And then staff is going to take another stab at an ordinance for no smoking in the parks.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? There's no executive session. Other business, once again, today I find myself just slightly challenged as being Board Chair, noticed that we had an individual that decided to choose to break the law. And we had also the instance in Oak Ridge. So Mr. Mokhaisky is working on maybe some board guidance to the Board Chair on meeting protocols. So we're going to try to bring that back to the Board for discussion to make sure that I'm meeting your expectations as Board Chair and make sure that I can get the meeting work done as your expectations are. So Commissioner Sorenson?
Well, all things considered, I think you're doing a great job. But I would say that when the gentleman tried to make a point of order or jumped in, I believe that only the people in the decision-making are the ones that are being discussing. So I don't think that's a good idea to call on people who are raising points of order or who want to add things. And I think you were very polite to let him say his piece. But sometimes that invites the other side that disagrees with that point of order or whatever to come in and have another argument. And I do think that the civility in these meetings, you know, is important because I heard some people coughing after the guy lit the cigarette. I don't know if that was a protest or that was actually them reacting to it. I don't know. But I could definitely smell it from where I'm sitting. And I think it's against the law, you know, because of, public meetings have to be non-smoking now. But, and I don't really know what to do. I guess it's almost like the discussion about, well, what are we going to do if people smoke in parks? Well, what are we going to do if people take more than three minutes when they testify? Is it reasonable to have a police officer, you know, put a stun gun on them and, you know, make sure that they stop talking? Probably not. That's never happened, by the way, but that, that's the kind of thing, I think, if it's carried on. We had recently in Portland, city council meeting that had to be shut down by the mayor because people were protesting right in the middle of the city council meeting, city commission, I guess they have there. And so I do think this comes up where the, the ability of elected officials to get their work done is intruded on by people that are choosing to protest in some way in the meeting. And we give people plenty of slack on where they can protest in this community, but there's also a public business component where we have to make decisions and we can't have all of our meetings shut down by, by people going beyond their time or lighting cigarettes in public meetings. And I remember years ago, there was a guy that set a rag on fire at the EMU, right in the middle of a speech. And he was eventually prosecuted for, you know, arson, for endangering the public in the meeting. So that kind of thing does happen from time to time, but I think you're doing a great job. I think it's a great idea to have Mr. Mokhaisky in legal counsel, maybe give some, some guidance to us, not only to you, but also the commissioners, to be helpful to you in trying to make sure the meetings are run fairly. So thanks a lot.
Appreciate that. Commissioner Bozovich?
Yeah.
Liken?
Thank you. I think, you know, one of the things we need to do also is, it's not just about, you know, guidance for you. I think we need to provide the public guidance of what we expect from them and maybe have it posted. One of the things I thought was a regular rule was we didn't allow signs in our meetings, although I don't, and in the Oak Ridge hearing, you know, that was something that, you know, and we have in, you know, way back, we basically said no signs because it does tend to intimidate folks that might have a differing opinion, you know, and impede on other people's, you know, rights to express themselves when there's, you know, several people holding up signs in one side of an argument versus another. Same thing with the applause issue and how that impedes people. Even this has a tendency to intimidate if it's, if there's enough people doing this and you want to get up and speak against the people that just did this for the person that, you know, it's still applause.
Right.
But, you know, it's just sign language applause. So, you know, I agree. I do believe we need to think about the rules of conduct for a meeting and, in particular, let the public understand that so that they're not surprised when we get to that point. One of the easiest things that I've, you know, that may be available to you, you might want to think about, is if something gets, starts getting out of hand, is just immediately call recess. And we can step away and, you know, whatever, whatever that person's doing is no longer effective if we get up and walk away for a few minutes and let that situation calm down.
Okay. Commissioner Liken?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I don't know at Lane County if we have a sergeant-at-arms. And, you know, it's interesting, in Springfield, when you walk into the work session, the reason why the chief of police or the captain are there, they're not there just because they want to come to a city council meeting. They're there in their capacity as sergeant-at-arms. As well as in the audience during the city council meeting, which as mayor, I used them twice in my 10 years. Once was, I was sharing with Commissioner Bozovich at lunch today that, as you can imagine, when a strip club wanted to, wanted to go in downtown, and it clearly was one of the most packed council meetings I've ever had, but also was one of the more unruly crowds I've ever had. And when the applicant came up to speak, he was being booed and everything else. Well, it's his constitutional right to present. And what I did is I gavelled it down and informed the audience that I had Chief Smith rise. He's our sergeant-at-arms. If we continue this unruly, I will call recess and the sergeant-at-arms will escort you out of this meeting. And let's just, just allow folks to have their opportunity to speak. And after that, people just remain calm. And so I haven't really, I don't think we had a sergeant-at-arms here at the county as far as I'm, as far as I know.
We just have the sheriff's officers, the white shirts that are.
Yeah, which, which I think is helpful, especially once you know that there's going to be a meeting that's going to have maybe several people here. It's just always good to have them available and to point them out. But no, I look forward to, for Mr. Mokhaisky to come back, maybe with some sort of procedure in place. And I think that would be very helpful. But I would agree with Commissioner Sorenson. I, Chair Stewart, I think you've done an exceptional job. And I'm just, as our chair this year, and I just want to say, you know, I know we're coming to the end of the year, but thank you very much. You really have, we've had some issues that have come before us that have been challenging at times, but I think you have really have been, had a calm demeanor. And I, for one, am very appreciative.
Thanks. Well, Mr. Mokhaisky?
Mr. Chair, I just was going to offer that we do, we're collecting the policies and procedures that both the city council in Eugene and Springfield follow, as well as an organization that I worked with previously that had norms and procedures for the Board. And it, these address what you've already talked about, the conduct of commissioners, the conduct of staff, and the conduct of the public. Sort of Commissioner Sorenson talked earlier about modeling behavior that, you know, there's always going to be the challenge with enforcement of these things when you get any of those entities that may not follow any of the procedures. You have to resolve, how do you handle those situations? But it's, I think, a good course of action just to look at the appropriate sort of general policies and procedures and conduct in board meetings that you want to establish. And what I propose is we'll pull that together, review it and analyze it, and then maybe bring it forward for part of our discussion in December when we talk about our strategic plan. It may be worth the Board considering, you know, in the strategic plan, tasking staff with developing that and bringing it forward to you. But that might be a good place for us to have that initial conversation. We can present this to you, you can review it, and tell us what you like, what you don't like, and we can take it from there.
Well, I appreciate it. And maybe I'm just a little sensitive as Chair. I want to be mindful that you're, my colleagues are satisfied with the running of the meeting. But then I also would, will openly admit that in 12 years, you know, generally, most people abide by the chairs, you know, please cease and desist and move on. And I've just noticed that it seems like right now, maybe it's just the climate of our entire country that we tend to have a little bit more pushback. And I just want to make sure. that these things are handled appropriately, whether if they come up, so.
You know, the recent incidents are in everybody's mind, but don't forget the hearing we had out in Elmira, and how hard it was to control that, and there were actually people that had signed up to testify that night that did not, because they were afraid to, and came to me afterwards and told me so. And, you know, I was chairing that meeting, and it was, it was nearly impossible to control that audience.
Yeah. Okay. Is there any other business? All right, well then, with that, we're adjourned.